Good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's Cobb County Board of Commissioners meeting this August 12th, 2025. I'm not sure if we have Reverend Dr. Martin Hawley here today, but if not, we will have a moment of silence in lieu of our invocation, which will be followed by the pledge, which will be brought by Deputy Brian Montgomery. For those of you who are willing, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may now rise for the pledge.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, deputy. And our meeting is now officially called to order. On top of our meeting, we do have four presentations. And what we will do, I think we're still looking for some of our plaques for the first presentation. So we will go on to the second presentation, which is to recognize September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. That's okay, in Cobb County. For those of you who are part of this presentation with Commissioner Burrow, please join her up front.
Good morning, everyone. So I have the honor of presenting a proclamation for Constitution Week to the Daughters of the American Revolution Fielding Lewis Chapter here in Marietta. Before I read the proclamation, I'd like to, in memory, we lost a dear friend and warrior in DAR in the Fielding Lewis Chapter this year, Carol Palmer, who is a faithful, faithful servant and patriot. So I'd just like to remember her with this proclamation. She would be here if she could. She was always here every year. So just remember her family and the DAR family in your prayers. Whereas Constitution Week is a commemoration of America's most important document, and is celebrated the week of September 17th through the 23rd. It will be the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution on September 17th, 1787. The United States Constitution is a symbol of the tenacity Americans have displayed throughout history to maintain our liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. And whereas the celebration of Constitution Week was initiated by the Daughters of the American Revolution, and in 1955, the DAR successfully petitioned Congress to designate September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, a resolution later signed into law by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. And whereas Constitution Week serves to remind citizens of their duty to protect and uphold the Constitution, to highlight its importance as the foundation of our nation's values and governance, and to inspire the study of the historical context in which it was written in September 1787. And whereas, as a lasting tribute to the Constitution, the Daughters of the American Revolution established Constitution Hall, a national performing arts center that opened in 1929, and continues to serve as a symbol of the organization's dedication to preserving American heritage. Therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week in Cobb County. We extend our sincere appreciation to the Daughters of the American Revolution for their unwavering commitment to civic education and advocacy, and we encourage all residents to reflect on the significance of the Constitution and the freedoms it protects. This is the 12th day of August 2025.
Thank you so much. The Daughters of the American Revolution, the Fielding Lewis Chapter, is the local chapter here in Marietta, and we treasure the opportunity to be able to commemorate and celebrate the Constitution. We are the Daughters of the American Revolution, so it's important. It's one of the causes that we have. I'm Melissa Tanner. I'm the Regent of the Fielding Lewis Chapter here in Marietta. My Vice Regent, Andrea Riddle, and our Constitution Week Chair, Dolly Stratton. So thank you for the opportunity, Ms. Burrow. I'm so thankful to have you. We miss Carol, but you know, she left a great legacy for us. So thank you so much, and thank you for the opportunity.
And we'll get a picture. All right. Next up, our proclamation will be to recognize August as Child Support Awareness Month. Those of you who are part of this presentation, please join Commissioner Sheffield up front. Good morning. How are you guys this morning? Good. Okay. We can have some flank around on this side to balance it out. Okay. Okay. All right. Oh, we have some new furry friends. Okay. Whereas, all children deserve to have their basic needs met, and the Child Support Services Division of the Cobb County District Attorney's Office empowers parents to provide reliable support for their children. And whereas, together with the Georgia Department of Human Services, Child Support Services help children get the support they require by working with parents, non-parent caretakers, employers, and other states and countries to establish and enforce child support orders. And whereas, innovative resources are used to connect parents with the division and help them overcome barriers to pay child support, including the Fatherhood Program, Parental Accountability Court, and a mobile app that allows users to send documents, make payments, and coordinate calls and appointments with their agents. And whereas, the Child Support Services Division currently touches the lives of more than 6,100 children in Cobb, handling more than 4,000 cases, and having collected $9,396,140 for the fiscal year 2024. I'm sorry, and that's 8,303,913 thus far in the fiscal year 2025, which ends on September 30th, 2025. And therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim August as Child Support Awareness Month in Cobb County, and commit to proclaiming the health and well-being of all children so they may thrive and succeed. Now, this is the 12th day of August 2025. Congratulations, Rees.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. These folks do an incredible job putting food on the table and paying light bills and things like that for families. They're on pace to do over $10 million this year in collections, and that's real money to some folks that need it. So we're very proud of them. They do great work, and they are understaffed, and we're trying to get some more money out of the state to help with that problem. So please give them support, and thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Photo time. Ross, how should we stack?
Well, just in. Dogs in front.
The dogs in front, of course. They're front and center.
Come to the front.
Yeah. Come on, we're going to kind of have a couple of layers. Yeah. Let me get this in the meantime. All right. We will now go back to the top of our presentations, and I will ask those who are part of the Safety Village Foundation and those who have supported them through the Safety Village programming, please join Commissioner Allen up front.
How are you?
Good morning. Good morning.
All right. Every year, the Cobb Safety Village Foundation wishes to recognize companies, organizations, and individuals who have contributed to the success of the Cobb County Safety Village through their financial and in-kind support. The success of the Safety Village would not be possible without these valuable partnerships. Serving 22,000 students every year, and the program continues to expand, the Safety Village's mission is to provide the highest quality of safety education and training available. This effort will enable our citizens to help and protect themselves and others from accidental death, injury, and destruction of property. The Safety Village Foundation's mission is to serve as an advocate, develop partnerships, and secure resources in support of the Cobb County Safety Village. This year, they will be recognizing a few organizations, and I'll pass it over.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Safety Village Foundation Board could not do their job without support such as you see up here. If you've been to the Safety Village, and if you haven't, your kids probably have. As the Commissioner said, over 22,000 students come through that village each year, and without these people's support, we could not do what we do. So thank you for Commissioners, County Manager, and the county for allowing us to come here and recognize some of our foundation members, and not just that, but the support they have given. And I'll start with Chris and Steve Welchel. They are the owners of Marietta Record Service, and I've known you They are the owners of Marietta Record Service, and I've known you, seen them out on the road, but more so for what they've done for us. They've been with us for about five or six years now, and they are major supporters of our Truckapalooza fundraiser, Spanish Day, as well as the Camp Puzzles. And every time we call, they are there with their trucks. The kids love the trucks, and we appreciate everything that y'all do to help support the foundation. With that, we have a plaque to recognize you, Marietta Record Service. So, Steve and Chris Welchel, thank you very much. And next, I have Al Martin with Georgia Power. And Al, I'm sorry, I forgot your... Do what?
I want to go.
No, no. Are you with Al? Oh, okay. Oh, Lindsey, I'm sorry, Lindsey. I've been away too. You know, you go away for too long, you forget things. So, anyway, Al Martin is with Georgia Power, and it's interesting, Al has been a part of our foundation since its inception back in 2009, I think it was, and he's been a major part, as well as Georgia Power. His leadership has been unwarranted. I mean, he just, the God does everything for us. Last two years, he was our president and was always there and always leading us. So, Al, we can't thank you enough for what you've done for the foundation and continue to do. I know one day you'll retire and go play some golf, but thank you so much. And for Georgia Power, Al Martin, thank you. We do have a third that's going to be recognized today, and that's the Piedmont Injury Law. Oh, okay, he didn't... Yeah. Come on up here. So, this is Ken Crossan, is it Crossan? Crossan, okay, Ken. So, Ken's with Piedmont Injury Law, and I think it was 2020 when he came for a tour, and then in 2021, we did a ribbon cutting there at the Safety Village for his storefront. So, he has been a tremendous supporter of the Safety Village, and we can't thank you enough, Ken, for what you have done with your, and I'm glad you made it through the Cobb traffic.
A little tour to the Safety Village and back.
So, with that, the foundation truly couldn't do it without support from all of the community, particularly our sponsors that we have, but the partnership that we have, not just with these sponsors, but with our Board of Education, our Commissioners, it couldn't be done. And the Safety Village, if you don't know, is extremely unique. It's a major part of the fire service ISO rating, but more importantly, it teaches not just kids, we have adults come through there that learn safety. We have no idea how many accidents are prevented from the work that is done at the Safety Village. So, for all of you, thank you so very much for being here this morning, and thank you guys for allowing us to recognize them.
Thank you.
And thank you to our board of commissioners.
Oh, thank you.
All right, Ross.
All right. We shall man.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Here we go. Three, two, one, and I got it.
All right, thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you for seeing you too. Thank you.
Hi, Steve.
Hey, Sam. Thank you. And God is, like I said, God is good.
Last but not least, I'll ask for those of you who are here as a part of recognizing August as National Water Quality Month, to please join me up front.
All right, it's good to see all of you here this morning, as August is an opportunity for us to recognize the significance of a precious resource that is easy for us to take for granted, and that is not only just having water, but having clean, accessible water. And I serve not only as the Chairwoman of the county, but also on our Cobb Marietta Water Authority, and have had many discussions with the Board and also our Director here at Cobb Water System about how we protect our water resources, and felt that it was really overdue opportunity for us to share with people just the amount of effort, time, resources, investment goes into providing these resources here that we can rely on in our county every day. And so with that, I just have some proclamations that I'd like to present, and then I'll give some of you an opportunity to talk about some of the work that you do. National Water Quality Month, again, is an important time of the year, and it was established by the Environmental Protection Agency to raise awareness about protecting water sources, and it recognizes that clean, reliable drinking water is fundamental to all of our public health, to economic growth, and to quality of life. It's also essential for survival of diverse species and survival for many of our tourism industries that depend on having clean water. This month also gives us an opportunity to recognize the many men and women behind the work, and it's unbelievable, if any of you have gone out to any of our water system buildings or any of the tours that have been provided by our organizations that help to provide clean water, you'll see that there are a number of passionate people that make this possible. And I'd like to recognize two of our active citizen-driven organizations, which are the Chattahoochee River Keeper and the Cusa River Basin Initiative. Thank you. These two organizations preserve and restore the Chattahoochee River Basin and the Upper Cusa River Basin with activities including education, conservation, testing, monitoring, and legislative efforts. They use science-based advocacy and public education, and also conduct water quality monitoring and community cleanups to educate our citizens and our leaders about ways that we can ensure we have reliable, clean water. They also help with planning and developing sustainable water planning efforts, and I just want to take this opportunity, this moment of privilege, to say thank you for And for our Cobb County Marietta Water Authority, they hope to ensure drinking water meets or exceeds all of our state and federal quality standards. They use rigorous testing, advanced treatment, and they are constantly monitoring our systems 24/7. They produce approximately 80 million gallons of water daily for our use here, and I want to thank you for the diligence of your efforts in providing this resource to our citizens. And certainly, last but not least, our very own Cobb County Water System, they work to protect our local waterways through stormwater management and environmental compliance. They conduct stream monitoring and public education. They operate and maintain wastewater collection and treatment infrastructure, and they deliver clean water to more than 190,000 homes, schools, and businesses daily. And we can't thank you enough for what you and your team do to serve us here in the county and our citizens. And that's for you, Director. So, with that, I thought I'd give you an opportunity to share a little bit about your
It's an honor to be able to serve the citizens of Cobb County, as well as the other four counties that the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority provides drinking water to. It's often forgotten about, but we might live a week without electricity here and be very much inconvenienced, but a week without water would be very different. And again, thank you for this recognition, Ms. Cupid.
Thank you also for this recognition. I have with me here today a few of our staff to represent 400 employees that proudly serve our community to protect the lakes and the streams in Cobb County and to deliver safe, clean drinking water to all of our customers. And we also, in order, in addition to providing wastewater treatment services to unincorporated Cobb, we also provide those services to all of the cities in Cobb County.
Hi, I'm grateful for the recognition. Working in Rome, I appreciate the acknowledgement that drinking water here can be impacted by things that are happening in Dawsonville or Canton, and I'm proud to represent a watershed organization that takes a big-picture look at waterways across jurisdictional lines, congressional districts, and even state lines so that we can keep a big-picture eye on the health of our waterways.
Thank you very much. Grateful for the recognition of the work that we do every day in this month of August. Organizationally, we, our job is to make sure there's enough clean water in the Chattahoochee River for all the folks that need it and all the communities, and we also are always looking forward to and grateful for the partnerships that we have with Cobb County Marietta Water Authority and Cobb Water. Thank you.
All right, please help give them a hand. All right, so we'll line up. For those of you who have a proclamation, why don't you come in the middle? Thank you. And our employees, you can come up and be seen. Yes.
All right, here we go. Three, two, got it?
All right, thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Thank you so much for sharing with us. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All righty, we are now at our first public comment, and I do want to share that I will be leaving this meeting early, as I will be attending a funeral today, so there will be a change of hands for me to the Vice Chair during this meeting. I apologize if I end up interrupting anyone who's here for public comment.
As the Board provides the podium for public comments, it's appropriate for us to review some of those related meeting rules. Please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be made to the Commission as a body and addressed through the Chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. Comments should not be slanderous. The Board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion don't necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the Administration of Cobb County Government, and there is a tracker on the podium to keep track of your time. First public speaker is Christine Rosman.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. When I was looking at the agenda for today, I noticed that there are a lot of consent items on there, per usual, and per usual, I look at those items, and I think, does Cobb really want all these things? And then we're committing to millions of dollars for things that most Cobb County citizens do not want. And, but I know that who does want them, and that's the Atlanta Regional Commission, United Nations, World Economic Forum, because a lot of these systems that you're trying to implement all originate there. It's nothing organic that's come up. It all comes from them. I mean, you can look it up, any of these things. Anybody can do it. What's, what is going to happen, though, is that we're going to have some half-baked projects likely because of the DOGE program that's going on and federal government monies probably aren't going to be coming here, even though you've applied for these grants, and these grants are like really nice ways of handcuffing the Cobb citizens to a hell of a lot of taxes and for things that we don't necessarily want, but again, are more Agenda 21, 2030-driven. So, and having those livable city initiatives, and so that you can kind of make sheeple out of people and say, here's what we're going to do, and this is where we're going to go. And people are waking up now. They're waking up because they're looking at what's happening in our country, and it's like, you know what? We don't like this. And they're looking at what's happening in Cobb. So, also, I wanted to mention too, is that I think, you know, we're honoring Constitution Month, and I think the Constitution's, I mean, it is really, I mean, it's the template for what is supposed to be adhered to. And here we had last month, July was Muslim Month. So, are we going to do Judeo-Christian Month? Are we doing Hinduism Month? Are we doing that? Oh, wait, no, we can't because that's unconstitutional. So, what, why did you do that last month for two years in a row? I, I, I'm kind of, a lot of us that kind of know about that church and state thing know that that wasn't right, and we're just wondering why. I know that it was that you were able to fill the room up, which was good because then it filled the room up, and then you wouldn't have people that were pushing back on the tax increases that we're getting. And Jennifer Mossbacher is another little bone of contention that will be addressed later.
Rosman, your time's up. The next speaker is Denny Wilson.
Good morning, Denny Wilson, District Four. The county attorney states at the beginning of each meeting that public comment is not a dialogue with the Board. The public gets three minutes to speak, and our mics are turned off. So, Chairwoman Cupid, why do you feel the need to pretty much rebut everything a public speaker has to say if you don't like it? Prime example, the last budgeted Milisch meeting, you spent an addition of 45 minutes per hearing with rebuttals. The enormous length of your responses to public comment is only validation of what's being said by the public. The other Commissioners state their opinion, they move on, but you, I mean, they don't take up nearly the time that you do, and if you go to them and you solicit a response from them, they state their case and they turn their mics off. So, my request to you today is if we, if we can be limited to three minutes, then the Commissioners, which, which you changed from five minutes to three minutes, Commissioners should be limited to a set amount of time, way short of 45 minutes. Since we, the people, as taxpayers, you know, we're responsible for paying your salaries, and I don't think that we should be held here to the wee hours of the night because you take up all the time in speaking. I mean, people have their opinion, and you can shake your head, but you do. I mean, these last public hearings, we were here an hour and a half longer than we should have been. And I'm sure county staff, some of these people have children that they have to get home to. So, all I'm requesting is that you limit, you know, your comments, I mean, way short of 45 minutes. I don't mind you explaining, you know, your side, but the county attorney clearly says that it's not a dialogue between you and, well, we can't have a dialogue with you, but you know, you can go on and on and on and on and have one with us. I mean, and the only reason I'm saying it, is saying this is because the last hearing, the two hearings, I was sleepy as crap. I mean, I had gotten up at 5:00 that morning. I get, really, I get up at 4:00 every morning, but I had gotten up around 2:30, 3:00, and couldn't go back to sleep. And when I came in here, I was tired, I was sleepy, and then I had to hear you rumble on and on and on because the speakers had said something that you didn't like. And it's okay for you to get your point across, but just don't take an hour, hour and a half. Be considerate of, be considerate of our time, just as the other four Commissioners are. Thank you.
For the, excuse me, for the record, I would just like the clerk to note that there is a difference between public comment and a public hearing.
The next public speaker is Tracy Stevenson.
Good morning, Commissioners.
I do want to stack something on top of what Ms. Wilson said, only in that when we have these tax increase hearings or any other hearings where we're going to have a lot of public comment and so forth, I really don't understand why we have proclamations. It's going to drag out an already long process into an even longer process on that night. It's not like we don't have 24 meetings a year to do adequate numbers of proclamations. But anyway, that's your choice, not mine. What I really want to talk about is the recent Board of Elections kerfuffle. While I agree that the state representatives had complete control to do whatever they wanted to do in terms of that Board of Elections, it was done rather clandestinely behind the scenes. There was no due process. Man, in this day and age, do I hear a lot of things, read a lot of articles that mention the phrase "due process." I think transparency is great for government. I think anything done in the back room without the use of transparency is not good for government and the way it looks. They didn't do anything wrong by the rules. They were allowed to do what they did, much like what Home Rule, the Republicans did what they were allowed to do. And this whole, whole Home Rule kerfuffle for two years that we went through prior to this one. And I know that you're going to shake your head, as you are, and tell me that I'm just looking at it wrong, but I'm just saying that transparency is important, you know, and the due process is very important, and that's what the people look for. And you fought one for a year, you know, for two years, didn't fight the other one at all. And I, you know, and I struggle with, because I'm a pretty patriotic person, I struggle with Ms. Mossbacher, not for any other reason that she won't do, you know, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which amazingly, she did at the meeting where she was appointed. I don't want to make a big deal out of that. That's personal choice. People can do what they want. But perception is reality. And when you perceive things that don't feel right, they don't feel like they've been done correctly, whether they have or not, perception is reality. Thank you.
That's our last public speaker.
I see somebody standing up there. Ma'am, if you're here for a public comment, you need to sign in, and then you can speak.
Right here.
We'll just ask, before you speak, that you state your name for the board, please.
Hello, my name's Iman Amad. It's nice to meet you. I've sent several emails, as well as, I had an opportunity to meet with Commissioner Gambrill the other day, and, you know, we had a very lovely meeting as we talked about some of the concerns of Muslim residents in Cobb County. And I just wanted to take a moment to recognize and appreciate the proclamation those issued at the last meeting. I know that, you know, we have some disagreement amongst us today, but as far as proclamations go, when they recognize local communities and local members, I think that that is something that is well within the scope and purview of the Board of Commissioners. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all because, you know, coming from that community, advocating for them in my role at CARE Georgia, and also just being a Muslim myself, I think that the opportunity to recognize those folks and individuals meant a lot to the community. And I know that there are, you know, there are a lot of people who showed up for that proclamation, and I know that there are many who reached out to us as well to commend the Board of Commissioners and, and just, you know, thank us for our ability to help increase civic engagement across the metro Atlanta area. So I thank you for your time, and also thank you for the proclamation. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Susie Clark.
Yes, Susie Clark, Cobb County. Anyway, I, I was going to speak on something else this morning. I, too, got up late, but after hearing public comments, I wanted to kind of talk about those. I do applaud what you did last month because we need to worry about those who are disadvantaged. There's plenty of Jewish and Christian voices in this community. There are not so many others, and I applaud you for that. But you do care. You do listen to public comment. I do attend the Cobb Schools Board of Education meeting. They do not if they know that you're not on their topic. I spoke to Mr. Rasbdel a little off the board last time, and he wouldn't look me in the eye. You do care, and I appreciate that, whether you're one side or the other. They do not, and I applaud you for that. I do also know that they only give you two, two minutes, and these are for our children. They only give two minutes for public comment, and now they are not videotaping those any longer. I find that very sad because, yes, people who are interested in public comment can find those videos elsewhere, but it is not easy, and only if those speakers choose to share their public comment. You do respond to public comment. They do not. You allow me to come up and speak with you and thank you or whatever after the meetings, and I appreciate that. They do not. You try to talk to them, you're jumped almost by the police. Oh, you can't go up there. They'll come down, and it feels like when they do come down, they're coming off of their throne. So I want to let you know, I appreciate your willingness to interact. You do discuss. You do let those who are not on, in the majority, have their concerns, their voices heard. They are no longer, they, only the majority get to have their interest discussed. I appreciate that. The Board of Elections is not, oop, time, thank you.
I think that now concludes our first group of speakers.
Thank you, Bill. So that now takes us to the consent agenda portion of our meeting. The matters on our consent agenda, they scroll on the screen prior to the meeting in bank, and we'll do so afterward. We vote on all of these items again at the same time. I believe that there have been changes to this agenda. Both of them, one of them, I believe, but both of them are in community development. The first one is, I believe, in District Three, is that Tricam Road? That has been withdrawn from the agenda. And then, yes, that's number 31, thank you, Commissioner. And then number 34, per our discussion yesterday, that's in District Four, that has also been withdrawn from the consent agenda, I believe with hearings to follow. And then lastly, if you go to the county attorney portion, there has been a revision to include the district for that matter, and that's for the conveyance of a quitclaim Those are all the changes that I have. Commissioners or our clerk, do you observe any others? Okay. Commissioner Burrow.
Just for clarification, the two alcohol hearings that were pulled, are they pulled as yours for a hearing next month? Or, or we can't hear them today?
No, ma'am.
So they have to go to a morning meeting?
Yes, today we were just to review a summary of the appeal hearing that already took place for both matters, for the Teddy's Market on Tricam Road, and then for Mappleton Food Mart, which doesn't have the address here.
It's 1181, that isn't it?
Thank you. So we would have to coordinate with our county attorney and community development to determine when the hearing is.
Correctly, someone's staff would be there and witnesses, and they'd coordinate for the next available BOC morning meeting.
Okay, so they'll contact.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Yes. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Bear with me one moment. All right, Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised, with items 31 and 34 withdrawn, and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Second, is there any discussion? Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, Madam Chair, I am opposed to item number 32. It is on consent, but that's just opposition.
Okay, that's for another appeal hearing for Ivy Walk, I believe, in District Two, but we will keep that on the agenda. Okay.
Right.
All right, is there any further discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. That now takes us to the regular portion of our meeting, and our first tab is for the American Rescue Plan Act.
Good morning, Chairwoman Commissioners.
Bear with me, I have a Commissioner that.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Burrow, go ahead.
I forgot to recognize Lee Manus and Vinnie. They were item number 27 for a new fire dog, and I'm sorry, they're here. Would you stand, please, and bring Vinnie out to the aisle? I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I had that on my notes and I forgot it. So this is Vinnie, and he's getting a new partner soon, hopefully. And his handler, Lee Manus. Thank you.
Hi, Vinnie. Beautiful. Thank you.
Vinnie detects accelerants in arson and fires, so he's very smart. And I've been trying to hook him up with Rose.
Some may call it a catwalk. Today, we could call it a dog walk. Vinnie's on today.
Thank you, Lee.
All righty. Getting back to ARPA, I will turn things over to our finance director to tee up this item.
Good morning, Chairwoman Commissioners, County Manager. We have one item before you on the ARPA tab, and we are asking the Board of Commissioners to approve the reallocation of funds received pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 in the amount not to exceed $110,000 for the support service projects designed to enhance mental, physical, and behavioral healthcare services, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the agreement and any other necessary documents for said purpose.
Okay, so moved as presented.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Bill. We are now at our transportation tab.
Good morning, Chairwoman Commissioners, County Manager Drew Ressler with DOT. We have 10 items for your consideration on the regular tab this morning. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners determine, excuse me, that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under state law, authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on Dewes Road at Aniok Road, project number B2302, adopt a resolution in order in form substantially similar to the attached, and as approved by the county attorney's office, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Yes, Commissioner Gambrill.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All right, call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a local maintenance and improvement grant program application for FY '26 to the Georgia Department of Transportation for Cobb Parkway Pedestrian Bridge North, Cobb County Project Number TR 535, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Allen.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with DNH Construction Company in an amount not to exceed $177,992.50 for drainage repair system repairs on Farm Crest Point, project number B22163, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $120,531.94 for drainage system repairs on Valley View Circle, project number B22168, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a consultant services agreement with Stand Up Consulting Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $774,827.72 for preliminary engineering design of George Busby Parkway Corridor Trail, Cobb County Project Number B2438, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Allen.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I just can't believe this is now in District Two, the way the lines have drawn. Yeah, we have everything in District Two. We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for preliminary engineering design of Ostale Powder Springs Road Trail, Cobb County Project Number B2439, and authorize negotiations for final scope of services and fees, beginning with the top-ranked firm, BCC Engineering, doing business as Heath and Lineback.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a consultant services agreement with Pond &amp; Company in an amount not to exceed $593,412.98 for preliminary engineering design of Oakdale Road Complete Streets Bridge Replacement, Cobb County Project Number B2449, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
No discussion, but just I'm looking forward to the future project and having that turning lane on Buckner.
Yes, an important one.
It's going to relieve a lot of congestion on Oakdale, so, thank you.
All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Lawson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $861,297.25 for Canton Road at Piedmont Road, project number B2312, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, motion to approve. Second.
All right.
Comment.
Yes, please, go ahead.
This was, has been on hold for a while, so I'm glad to see it coming through, and it will help a lot on Canton Road with the turn lane.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Drew.
Very good. We will call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the revised budget and current schedule for the 2022 Transportation Improvements Program funded primarily by the 2022 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions per the 2022 SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program budget attached.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Lawson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $559,653 for traffic signal installation on Marshall Road at Giles Road Hill Road, project number B2576, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gambrill.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
We are now at the public. We are now at the Public Services Agency tab and our only matter, I believe, we have is Parks.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. We have one item for consideration this morning. Our item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Southern Sign Systems Incorporated to provide construction services or entry signage replacement at various parks Phase Two under the 2022 Parks SLOSS Program. The work includes adding entry signage at Fuller's Park, Hurt Road Park, Larry Bell Complex, Lost Mountain Park, Sweat Mountain Park, Traymore Park, and Powder Springs Park. We ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the contract with Southern Sign Systems in an amount not to exceed $153,812.50 for entry signage replacement under the 2022 Parks SLOSS Program, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, so moved as presented.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? The signs look great. We look forward to continuing to see more of them transition.
Absolutely.
We'll call the question. The motion carries five-zero. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
We are now at Support Services and there is one matter under Support Services Administration.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Real estate and public safety have a joint item this morning. Real estate and public safety would like to request the Board of Commissioners approve a purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of unimproved land for a future E-911 Emergency Communications Center located at 5245 Magnum Road, Powder Springs from A Short Thing Two LLC, approve the payment of associated land acquisition costs, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the purchase and sale agreement and all other necessary documents.
All right. Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Just, just to note that this amount that we're offering is under the appraised value-
Yes, ma'am.
-for the record.
It is.
Thank you.
Any further discussion from any other commissioners? Just congratulations to 911 for finding a location. Look forward to getting this bill.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
We'll call the question. The motion carries five-zero. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
That now takes us to our second public comment.
Chairwoman, we have no one to sign up for that portion.
All right, very good. Racing right along. That takes us to our appointments and our first appointment is to approve the reappointment of Anna Murphy to the Cobb County Board of Family and Children's Services. So, I will move that our Board support that reappointment.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five-zero. And the next two are announcements. I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Sheffield.
Okay. I'd like to announce the appointment of Christopher Brock to the 1% Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee.
Thank you, and the next one is also yours.
The next one, to announce the reappointment of Barry Krebs and Jeff Paget to Keep Cobb Beautiful.
Thank you, Commissioner. And before the 10 o'clock hour, that takes us to the Commissioners' public address and we'll begin with Commissioner Gamble once the slides are queued up.
You can join Lucky Strike Kennesaw for an afternoon of bowling, arcade action, delicious fights, and good times with your friends. It'll be this Saturday, August 23rd, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. You can enjoy free bowling and its one free game per guest, $10 arcade card on the house, and a complimentary snack while supplies last. Lucky Strike Kennesaw is located at 775 Cobb Parkway or Cobb Place Boulevard Northwest in Kennesaw. Join Acworth for a classic car cruise from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Saturday, August 30th, at Logan Farm Park at 4405 Cherokee Street in Acworth. Free admission for spectators. A $5 entry fee is requested for all vehicles participating in the cruise. All proceeds benefit Horizon Field, a special needs sport facility in Acworth. For more information, you can contact Dalton Hill at dhill@acworth-ga.gov or call 770-917-1234. Thank you.
I know Commissioner Sheffield's probably gonna talk about it as well, but I'll just acknowledge, wanted to acknowledge Parks, DOT, everyone that played a role in Saturday's bike ride for the unofficial opening of the connection from the Silver Comet to the Atlanta Belt Line. It was a really good time, but thank you all that helped make that event a success. Also, this Thursday night, in partnership with the Powers Ferry Corridor Alliance, I'll be having a town hall at the Boy Scout Center behind the Battery at 6:30. So, please come out if you are available and in District Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all? Eric?
There's the Connect the Comet stuff. I did it in reverse order, but some nice pictures that were out there. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Seen on the Green Summer Performances continue. Cobb Parks and the Art Place at Mountain View invite you to a free summer performance of Twisters at 7:00 p.m. this Thursday, August 14th, The End of the Line at 7:00 p.m. Saturday, August 16th, all at the Art Place, Mountain View, 3322 Sandy Plains Road. Seen on the Green, the dynamic new summer entertainment series features free outdoor theater and live music performances. It will transform the summer evenings into unforgettable experiences for families, friends, and arts enthusiasts. These events are free, no RSVP is required, seating is first come, first served with the lawn and grass seating available, along with the limited number of bistro tables and chairs. Bring a blanket or grab a chair and don't forget to bring your picnic basket. For more information, go to artplacemaryetta.org. I guess that should be .gov/SeenOnTheGreen. Pause and reflect and it's time to adopt. Now, through the end of September, the shelter is bringing back its popular $25 Adopt a Friend special. You can adopt a dog or a cat for just $25 or donate cat or dog food and adopt for free. Donations are accepted Tuesday through Sunday, 10:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. You can go to cobbcounty.gov/pets to see which pets are available for adoption. And save the date. The Fishing Rodeo and Fish With Your Commish is coming up October 4th, on Saturday, October 4th, at Ebenezer Downs Park, 4057 Ebenezer Road, Marietta. Grab your fishing rods and join us for a really fun day at the Fish With Your Commish and Fishing Rodeo. There will be trophies awarded for the rodeo. The competition is open to children's ages three to 16 and there is a $5 registration fee and you can register at secure.rec1.com/Georgia/Cobb-County-Georgia/Catalog. Those interested in volunteering can contact Candy Cook at candace.cook@cobbcounty.gov or call 770-528-8819. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. District Four News and Updates. This weekend, I was excited to celebrate the completion or near completion of Connect the Comet Project, connecting Cobb County's Silver Comet Trail to the Atlanta Belt Line, opening new pathways for community connection, promotion of health and wellness, and improving the quality of life for our residents. The seventeen-mile bike ride was for a great cause organized by Dr. Jim Moulton to bring awareness to multiple sclerosis. A special thanks to DOT, Parks, and Public Safety for contributing to the success of the event. And Commissioner Allen and I promise to get on bikes next time. Just wanted to make sure you were listening. Afterwards, I headed over to the Maple House for the Woofs and Whiskers Runway Show. This was a fun community event with the costumes worthy of a Parisian runway. There were unique costumes, but Ashley and Sadie stole the show and earned the winning trophy for their Butterfly Garden-themed costumes. Congratulations to the winners. And you see me and Rose down there, you see that? Okay. Hero Care Clinic invites everyone to take advantage of an upcoming health event. No appointment is needed and insurance is not required. The event will include free labs and health checkups. The Hero Clinic is located at 6130 Hotel Street in Ostell. There are several dates for opportunities to attend, August 13th, 18th, 20th, or the 25th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. For more information, please contact the Hero Care Clinic at 770-726-3577. The Senior Citizen Council of Cobb will be hosting a celebratory award luncheon on National Senior Citizens Day, which will be on Wednesday, August 27th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. The event will take place at the Piedmont Church Conference Center in Marietta, located at 570 Piedmont Road. Each year, the council hosts a special award luncheon to honor our senior community members. During the celebration, awardees will receive the proclamation of life achievement presented by a commissioner. It is important to register by August 20th. For more information or to register, please visit seniorsofcobb.org. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. County Manager, do y'all have anything to add?
We are adjourned.
How about that?
How about that?